Thank you very much, and you're welcome. Let's go to the meeting floor. This is a special meeting of the Board of Directors. It's a public hearing on draft mitigated negative declaration of environmental impact from Marinwood Community Services District Park Maintenance Facility Replacement Project. Let's go over the procedures of our meeting, so we're all on the same page. Everybody will have the opportunity to speak. I would like for all of us to respect one another and give each person about five minutes to make a point. As any board meeting, the point of the meeting is not to have a discussion among yourselves, but rather address the board, and then the board of staff can reply. So I would kindly request that we don't have a cross-conversation going on because of mainly the respect for our staff's time. Again, five minutes, and again, it will be upon me to recognize whoever it's your turn to speak. All right, so now moving on to item C, the presentation of draft mitigated negative declaration of environmental impact. That's a logical. Again, I am required to read the first paragraph of the document that I hope you all familiarize yourselves with. There's plenty of documents on our website, and we keep referring to this as the source of objective information, factual information, so please go there if you need information. Anywho, here's the notice of availability of draft mitigated negative declaration of environmental impact and notice of public hearing from Marinwood Park Maintenance Facility Replacement Project. Notice is hereby given that Marinwood Community Services District proposes to complete the project to replace their existing park maintenance facility with a new park maintenance facility. The project involves removal of the existing park maintenance facility's modular building and the park maintenance facility's storage sheds, fence storage enclosure, and storage bins located adjacent to the banks of Miller Creek and restoration of the area to a natural setting. Two non-nated pine trees located some distance from the creek bank will be removed. A new 2,500 square foot storage shed shop and approximately 1,960 square foot fence storage enclosure are proposed. The subject property is located at 775 Miller Creek Road, South of California, and is also identified as Professor Parcelment Number ATN 16426035. The public review period is open until July 31, 2018 at 4:00 p.m. The mitigated negative declaration finds that the project would result in potentially significant environmental impacts related to topical issues 1, 5, 8, 15, and 16 below, and identifies feasible mitigation measures to avoid or reduce to a level of insignificance the environmental impact. Again, I call your attention to the fact that this is by no means a decision-making meeting where any call to action will be taken. It is barely too for us to hear your concerns, and again, I would focus your concerns on the environmental impact of this proposed development rather than this design, because the design's really not finalized, it's just a draft, it's a proposal. Also, this topic will be picked up at our next regular board meeting, to which you all cordially invited as always. It will be on August 14 at 7:00 p.m., 7:30 p.m. What else do I need to say? Oh, and if you would like to submit any written comments, please feel free to do so. Please direct them to the district manager who forwards them to the board, and again, we'll be collecting your opinions and concerns, and we do take them all into consideration.
Having had this nice dialogue...
Excuse me, what's the date, the last date we could send them in?
It's the July 31st at 4:00 p.m.
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me, I have a question. Is that regarding the environmental impact thing, or whatever the topic of the next meeting is going to be?
No, no, that's...
Just the environmental thing?
Yes.
Okay.
Usually, if you would like to bring something to be picked up at the board meeting, I believe our cutoff is 72 hours before the meeting, just so we can comply with Brown Act and post everything and make sure that everything is budgeted. Thank you for your attention. So moving on to item D, which is the public comment on draft mitigated negative declaration... Sorry, presentation of the draft mitigated negative... Can I just not say that? Presentation of draft mitigated negative declaration of environmental impact. And I will turn to Eric.
The draft mitigated negative declaration has, obviously, it's been posted, it's been distributed, it's been noticed, it was included as a legal notice in the Marin Independent Journal, it was sent to all environmental regulatory agencies listed in the initial study, and then it was also provided to other applicable groups in the area, as well as sent out directly notice to everybody who's on the email agenda distribution list for board agendas. The... What was taken, what was performed prior to the initial study being produced were multiple studies, one of the biological assessment that was performed by an agency known as Prunusky-Chatham, another was an archaeological and cultural resources assessment that was done by a group Archaeological Resource Services, and there were also Marin County codes that were quoted in here as well and referenced. The, again, this focuses on the environmental impact, it does not focus on any levels of design impact that goes into it. Again, that will be presented to the board for discussion and consideration at a later date depending on what comes back from this, and we can kind of turn those things around based on environmental comments and concerns.
Thank you, Eric. Let me just...
Point of order. Okay. Yeah.
You were done, right?
Sure.
Okay. Would the board like to comment on the report?
Straightforward.
No, I wouldn't comment.
Okay, thank you. Let's open public comments, Stephen, you can...
It's not a comment, it's a point of order, I just want a clarification. You say that the design is not included, but of course, the size of the design and its sighting would be considered part of the EIR, is that correct?
The site is part of the EIR?
But there's also the size, because that's...
It is referenced in the initial study as well as the pegoration itself, yes.
Yes to what?
Yes, the size of the facility, as well as the sighting is referenced in this study.
Okay, so comments are appropriate, okay.
So would you like to start us off, or with somebody else, like, please go ahead.
I've been watching Senate hearings on TV lately, so I'm going to take my entire five minutes and pass this.
Okay.
That's legal. So you got ten minutes. Does anybody else want to go? Well, I didn't finish my whole... So I'm happy to speak, but actually, Mike, I have a lot of detailed comments, but I was going, this evening, I'm going to just sort of characterize them in general, and specifically, specific comments will be mailed to you. Roughly, what I want to speak about is the following topics, the proximity to the creek and the violation of the stream conservation ordinance, the mapping data which is insufficient and appears to be using a dated USGS map, that by the way, is not the survey, the survey sits on top of the map, so whatever, if there's bad data underneath it, it may be in the right place of the earth, but if the stream course has changed, if the stream bank has changed, that is really the concern. We're also, I'm also concerned with drainage, sedimentation, and erosion. The new roof area is 50% larger than the existing roof area. The current impacts of this site, the current site, are exaggerated, and some of the future impacts are ignored. They don't indicate the outdoor storage of vehicles and where equipment will be stored, and this has impact. In fact, it's grossly inconsistent, because it's recognized in the current maintenance shed, but not the future maintenance shed. It's not indicated on the site. The Marinwood CSD has a pattern and practice of poor environmental stewardship, and we have examples of that, and also the lack of public process and the suppression of public notice, and I have examples of that as well. The plan is too small, the impacted area is too small, because the design, and now we're learning that the design intent has changed, but the initial design was for a multi-use building, but the only place for turning around a 22-foot Ford F-250 is in the meadow, and so this should also be included in the impact to our open space. Now, our immediate neighbors have legitimate concerns of noise, nesting birds, and viewscapes, and I, while we're not commenting on a specific design, certainly, a mass 4,400 square foot compound is going to impact the neighbor's viewscape. It spans, well, two full lots, plus a lot on either side, so you could say four lots, plus that area is heavily used by pedestrians, hikers, dog walkers, cyclists, you name it, that's a very popular area of the park, so we're taking away a very important part of our resource here. When you think about it, this is a 14.12 acre lot, this lot, and we have about six improved acres and about seven unimproved acres, and the, that compound plus the compacted area and everything that they use there is currently about an acre, and it'll be, grow to probably an acre and a half. We don't know, because it hasn't been defined, and that's where the key, the key problem I have, is we don't have enough information. Now, you have said that you're the sole objective source of information, and yet, dimensions are missing, we don't have, we never were able to write story polls, in fact, the lot markers that citizens have used to try to visualize the space have been taken up, and also notices to neighbors about this meeting tonight have been removed. So there's been a very much a control of information, and I'm sorry to say, it is not objective. We can question now whether or not our workers who spend 95% of the time in the field need a dedicated workshop. I believe they, I believe this facility is in fact designed maybe for something else, because it was none other than the architect himself who advocated the elimination of the maintenance department while he was on the board. The cost is another issue, and we don't have a budget. That's not an environmental issue, but it will indicate how much construction happens in that area. This is about our future, this is about our children's future, this is about who we are as a community, and I'm going to keep my comments short tonight, and I will give you some more detailed comments in a written letter, but I have nothing further to say, and I hope you listen to the rest of us, because those of us who know what is happening in detail are concerned, maybe there's a couple supporters here, but this is really an item that should go before the general public. It's a major, major deal for our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Hi, sorry, sorry, I am tardy, I'm just jumping in here. Are we on...
Public comment.
Public comment.
Okay, public comment. Okay, so thank you for your comments, Stephen. Other public comments?
Is this public comment, or is this comment on the facility?
Public comment on draft, so item D on the agenda is public comment on draft mitigated negative declaration of environmental impact.
Exactly, I'm sorry, I don't have the agenda in front of me.
If you would like to comment on the environmental impact, now would be your time to speak.
Great, thanks. Okay, so the negative declaration, perfect.
And I'm going to pretty much set my timer.
Just in case I'm going to read this. I only have two, two items right now that I want to talk about. First, I do want to say that the drawings definitely have misleading dimensions and creek setbacks, for example, the southeastern corner of the current fence storage area sits right on the top of the creek bank, not four feet behind it, as shown in the drawings, because I measured with my stick. And the western storage shed that floods is not drawn to scale, it looks like it's square on the drawing, but it's actually almost twice as long as it is wide. So I just want to let you know that it's hard for some of us to understand by looking at the drawing what's really true and what's not true, because it's just a little off. But I only have two comments about, two items right now. One of them is about soil removal behind the new facility, and I'm going to read this just so I can go fast, because I know you're timing me. There's no real facility design yet, so we'll have to use the numbers from the one design that's already been presented by the architect. The facility back end, the north side, that will be built six to eight feet from two neighboring residential parcels, is approximately 160 feet long, and that includes the 40-by-80 foot central building plus two partially enclosed end storage units. The length from the fence to the existing park driveway is approximately 28 feet on a sloped bank, so I have to assume that in order to build on the level ground, a very large amount of soil must be removed from the sloped area 28 by 160. The soil will be removed down several feet from beneath the bottom of the neighbor's fences, and I'm sure that trees and other tall vegetation will also be removed, not just those two pine trees that everybody keeps talking about. So I'm very concerned that neighbors overhead branches, tree roots growing throughout the soil, all that kind of stuff, all these extra trees that now provide a little bit of scenery will also be removed. The building center will be constructed on a 40-by-80 foot concrete slab and have a possible, possible, because we don't know what the roof is yet, 4,600 square foot roof sloping backwards towards the neighbors. And what I'm thinking is mitigation should be considered to prevent the 160 feet of fence damage, also to prevent rain runoff damage all around due to the new large roof and the concrete floor areas. And in my opinion, removing so much soil will decrease the groundwater absorption, and the tree, there'll be tree imbalances caused by chopping off branches, damage and possible death can be caused by removing some of the tree roots as they're going down to level off the area. So that's one of my concerns, is soil removal. The second concern is the swamp. There's a swamp area east of the trailer, and it's been there for decades, I don't know if you guys have walked through it and stepped in the muck and stuff, but I just did yesterday with a bug. It's in the facility construction site, and it starts at the eastern end unit of the new facility, covering a sloping area of approximately 30 feet by 30 feet. So it's a pretty big swampy area, and it's even swampy right now. You know, and there's a telephone pole that doesn't have anything on it, doesn't work. It surrounds, the swamp surrounds this telephone pole, and it's between the neighbor's fence and the existing driveway. Even in the middle of the summer, like yesterday, the area's swampy, muddy, and sinks down when walked upon by a 50-pound dog. Okay, so coincidentally, there's also a long white pipe sticking out from the creek bank that drains into Miller Creek just opposite this swampy area, and the reason for the swamp and the drain pipe is unknown to me. I've never asked, I don't know, I just assumed, it's always been their big deal. However, as depicted in the architect drawings, the eastern end unit of the new facility opens directly into the swamp, and that's the yard where supposedly we're going to have materials, material yard. It opens directly into the swamp, which will be used by park trucks emptying into and picking up materials from the yard. I only have one more paragraph. Soils, soil will be removed when the swampy area is leveled for access to and from the driveway. Who knows what will be found underground with the swamp and the drain pipe, I don't know how far the drain pipe goes, but mitigation must be considered before any soil removal and leveling can be done. We need to determine the reason for the swamp, and also the reason for the drain pipe should be determined, and the contents of the drain pipe that flows into Miller Creek should be identified. Thank you.
Thank you. I see him standing up there. Did you want to speak?
Oh, no, thank you.
Can I comment as a commissioner?
Absolutely.
I just want to thank you for putting this project forward and going through the environmental review. I think I agree with Stephen's comments about the future of Marinwood, I feel like if we don't address this, it's a liability we can't afford, and I think we have to act now, so I just want to thank you for taking the thoroughness of all the steps to go through the process.
I'm concerned about the soil removal, too, because it will be right behind my house. I have a huge elm tree, and cutting into any, you know, roots that are probably scattered all out there will kill it, and then it may possibly fall on my house and kill me.
Any comments?
Thanks, guys. I want to speak as the, as a resident, 14 years here, and, as you know, the architect with the record, but in this case, I'd like to speak as a resident, and I've been waiting for something to be done about this shed forever. I think any other place, the idea that removing this existing shed and replacing it with something else would be anything less than the best thing to do, the smart thing to do, wisest thing to do, reducing liabilities to the district, is just, you know, we wouldn't be going through this process. I'm glad we're going through the process, because it's part of what we have to do, but in speaking in terms of the support of the report, I'd say all of the factors that are listed as, you know, less insignificant or irrelevant, I completely agree with, I think the mitigated ones are, you know, easily mitigated. Just standing back and looking at what you see when you walk into the park in terms of just a dump, which is not a proper entrance to what is otherwise allowed to enter, yeah? Yeah, yeah, sure. So that's when you're standing right, right at the gate. So when you stand at the gate and look, you just see a dump, and when you walk through there, the doors are open, the employees have to work, walk around people, people have to walk around the employees, and the trucks, it's dangerous, it's a liability to the district, it's gone on too long, it needs to go. And completely in favor of having, you know, however long discussions about the budget and the design and whatever should replace it, but sticking to the, you know, to the report itself and the idea of environmental concern, in my opinion, and the people that I've talked to, anything less than replacement of this thing is just not, not acceptable. Since it's already been mentioned in a couple of the other comments going into the territory of, of design and how the future of another building at that site might impact, again, relative to what's there, it's laughable that, that this would be anything less than an improvement. All of the, the things that I've heard commented so far about potential impacts of new construction are all things that are standard in the construction industry of having to deal with in terms of good due diligence in construction. For example, the site conditions and any kind of movement of soil there are all part of the proper structural plan for the new building, as well as construction best practices. This is relatively flat site, any kind of removal of the minimal or movement of the minimal soil there is not a challenge, given my 30 years of plus of experience in terms of dealing with much more difficult sites, and also dealing with things like keeping trees, protecting trees, proper arborist report for, for conditions that are there would solve all those things. So that's not a reason to not accept the general notion that replacing this existing building, which is, you know, too close to the creek and is, you know, is just a safety problem liability for other reasons, you know, should, you know, that should proceed. Things like the, you know, the size of the roof, I mean, you basically, you have an existing tarped roof for years, has no proper direction of drainage. I mean, the idea of a newly designed roof that would have a drainage system that works this way in and is engineered by a civil engineer to properly drain and accommodate soil conditions and the particular slope of the site, et cetera, is no brainer. That's part of, of practice of the next phase of, you know, design approval and construction. All those things have to live by standards of the, of the county of Marin, and so when they're mentioned here as potential reasons for not removing, you know, this existing structure, to me, it's, you know, that's easily taken care of and protected by, by current standards compared to the standards of construction years ago. The, you know, when I hear about, you know, a swamp, which I don't believe exists, I would just say that the, you know, a new engraed slab would basically be designed to deal with, again, whatever the compression of the soil and soil conditions are. And then finally, look, you know, we need, if we are going to have employees, which is what the board has been supportive of for a number of years in keeping a minimum staff here, they need to have safe working conditions, which do not exist in the, in the existing building. It's unhealthy, it's unsafe, as I've cited, it's a liability for the district for years. The next phase of, of moving forward with some, you know, replacement, what that looks like, I, you know, I'm familiar with the, from the program and from dealing with the staff in terms of design, what they need to just do their jobs, and what was presented in this report as a, as a massive building is minimally what they need to, to do their jobs, and so I ask you to, you know, support and approve this document and, and move forward with coming up with a safer structure.
Excuse me, just wanted to know how much time you're giving people. Thank you.
So I have a comment to make, but I want to respect your attendance for tonight. This is regarding the VIR, but I would like to just respond to the bill. Is that okay, in 30 seconds?
30 seconds, yes. Try to keep it contained.
Or board.
Because it, because it is all in the better next meeting.
Okay, but the door's open there just to prep. Nobody that I know of disputes that that shed should not be removed and upgraded. Everybody's in agreement with that.
Probably everyone here is in agreement with that.
This is where, I don't want to go overboard, it's the dimensions and the size, that's all I wanted to say. Don't confuse that.
Any step one. I submitted my comments and everything to Eric earlier today, and I support what's been said by the people this evening.
My name is Eric Bingham, I'm the new homeowner that has this, has a proposed, has a proposed unit in my new backyard at 565 Wyland Wood, so I've only known about this for a day now. So that aside, I just wanted to, from the information that I have, reading through the information today, as it relates to the environment, I don't know if I can ask questions, or is... or is this just comments that I would propose to have these questions answered at some point by the board in terms of process?
At this point, this hearing is for comment. I would suggest, and I'm happy to give you my contact information, and you can come to me and ask what questions you may have. Welcome to the neighborhood, by the way.
Thank you.
And then if you want to submit a written comment, they carry, the written comments carry all the same weight.
Awesome. So, one, one question that I have is in reading through the environmental report and the removal of the two trees, I didn't notice any other trees being mentioned, and when I look at the trees adjacent to the, the back of my fence, just purely of account, there's nine trees, one, seven are narrow in nature, and I have pictures of them I can submit it or I can send it to you, either way. I could just pass it around. So, there's seven narrow trees and two larger ones. I think one of those is the oak. I'm not, as, as I said, I'm a new homeowner, I can't, I'm not good at identifying trees yet, but I believe of those nine trees, the only one that's been called out has been one of those. So, from an environmental, putting aside the design aesthetic and the viewscape, that's especially concerning for me from an environmental perspective. So, as it relates to the soil and removal and doing the due diligence in terms of putting in a new building, I would assume those would need to be moved or trimmed or something as, as it relates to creating that space for the new building. The second piece is, I have two larger trees in my own property too that hang, overhang the property, that I believe that those would probably also be adversely impacted and need to be trimmed. Like I said, I'm not gonna comment on the viewscape right now, but that's another area where that would be, now 11 trees that potentially adversely impacted by the addition of, of this unit, as I understand it right now. Questions that I have as it relates to feedback, you know, I understand this process has been going on for more than a year and a half now, and I just wanted to say for the record, I'm, I'm supportive of, you know, having a place for the maintenance workers to, where they feel safe and they can do their job well done. Many of us are, are still working, and, and having that type of environment is incredibly important. As it relates to design, I don't want to comment on that now, but I know size was touched upon. My understanding in terms of the height, I couldn't find the proposed height of the design, but as it relates to the, to the environment, is, is, I believe the, the height of the current unit was increased in height due to more maintenance-related issues, so I just want to make sure for the record that we anchor in what was the original unit and not stop gaps in order to make the, the unit continue to be functional.
15 feet.
So, yeah, so I believe it increased to 15 feet.
The peak is at 15 feet, it goes down to 11 feet for a pitch roof as opposed to the existing, which is flat. Flat at 15? No, flat at.
Okay.
I mean, it's not feasible to continue flat, it's just...
Okay. And my last, I guess, question that I wanted to leave, or I guess the last point is as it relates to sound and light, as it relates to the environment, I saw, I read about motion sensors for ambient lighting, lighting would be reduced as necessary when you go. What I loved about this neighborhood, it's nice and dark, and you see, see the stars. I just want something to, to call that out in terms of the environment of, of ongoing lights in our backyard when outside, everyone else is, is otherwise quite flat. Am I good on time? Do I have a few more seconds? And the last piece was sound, just recurring sound background, it's a nice quiet neighborhood, so it's not to disrupt that. And my last question is, as it relates to feedback, I would love to understand, as part of the feedback collection, you know, I've seen in multiple documents of how feedback from the community, immediate neighbors, is incredibly important, and I would love to understand to what degree we have an impact, like if, for example, worst-case scenario, I say, no matter what, under no circumstances do I want anything outside of my fence versus, hey, you know, if you're gonna cut down a couple trees, is there mitigating action where we can meet in the middle to plan so it does not totally impact the environment? So, those are just open questions to understand the process thoroughly. Thank you.
Other comments from the public?
Ray Lorber from the Miller Creek, we're attached stewards. Partly concerned it's getting rid of what's there. It's damaging the creek, we all know that. We've all agreed upon it should be removed. Let's get on to moving that. I don't know how you can have a negative type environmental study without having a design of the building first.
Thank you. Other comments from the public?
This is a side comment, I just...
So, wait, wait, is it...
Okay, no, no, I, I'll, I'll...
Okay, so Eric, you know, the, 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 the public, oh, did you have a comment?
I, I wanna, well, I'm, I'm a resident here for a while, and I'm a retired San Francisco firefighter, or fireman, my dad says. But I'm concerned with all the young families that are moving back into the area with their families. My son lives a block away from me, and he told me, Dad, it's a sense of community and family. Now, my, my concern is, what's gonna happen till that fortune pit's down there that we made up there, and it's a gathering place for the guys on Friday and we're, and for fundraisers too. Will that be impacted?
No.
Bill says no.
Well, I'm telling you, the, the, sorry, forgive, just want to, or just answer, since some questions have been answered, but, but the design doesn't impact that particular area. You know, it might be something that I could actually...
Because everybody's curious about that, you know?
Well, I'm glad that you asked the question, and I'm glad that you're answering.
It was considered part of, an essential part of any kind of new design, the impact of fire, but like that.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, good. Did you have anything else?
No, I, I waived my, my extra minutes to anybody that wants to use them.
Go ahead.
She won't let you.
Good, okay.
First of all, I want to actually reinforce what John said about Bill's comment. We all want a new shed, and if we could just agree to that one thing, I think all of us could shake hands and walk out the door happily. Really, this, this issue is a question of siding and putting it in the most environmentally sensitive place, and size, the footprint. We love the park, and park maintenance serves the park, and so anything that impedes that is really against, am I due to public policy and intentions of the park? So that's, that's, that's where I see the disagreement, and if we can focus on a better solution, we can all be happy, and yes, we can be proud of our future.
Thank you. Another, what are the positive news to, I guess, wrap up public comments? If I don't hear any further public comments, then Eric procedurally, do we, what's next?
Well, as this has all mentioned, I mean, this topic will be continued at the August 14 board meeting, once all, once the comment period is ended, all the comments will be consolidated. They will then be presented to the board in accordance with how the process under Sequel works, and the mitigated negative declaration will be presented to the board, and again, once all comments are taken in, analyzed, and then reviewed to see if there are additional mitigation factors that could be needed or not. Sound about right?
Sounds good, thank you. Do I have a motion to adjourn? All of us in favor? Aye. Thank you all for coming to me.